All right, so let's call to order the Lower Southford Township Order Supervisors Meeting for third twenty twenty four. If everybody could, one to please join me pleasantly. Bring this to our first public discussion period of which we have two on the agenda. If there is anyone wishing to be recognized. A name and address for the record.
I'm just wanted to talk a little bit about some walkable letter on. Now's the time. Okay, um, so I know that you guys are voting right now to accept the study. Um, but I did a few weeks ago put a post on social media regarding this and um, I did get a lot of um feedback. About it and a lot of people were unaware of what it was. Um, they didn't know the details. Um, a lot of people went and they looked at, you know, what you guys have on the website. And there was a lot of opposition based on um environmental concerns, concerns about runoff. Concerns about um. Properties that that would lose a lot of um their value based on not just the past, but also the um one thirteen bypass. Um, and I I was able to, I I actually have some people upcoming who had more um signatures. But I had about two hundred and fifty signatures on the petition um saying that they are opposed to walkable letter off out there. So I just wanted to let you guys know that there is um opposition to it within the community.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be recognized?
You probably want to do that as part of the hearing and ask questions when it's on the record. Exactly what you told about Joseph.
It's ready. The police, I would have to check with the police chief and that probably come under the vehicle code and I'd want to know how would the vehicle code reference as far as aftermarket.
We can look into that and just check with Joe at the end of the meeting. Just give him a phone number so he can get back to you on that specific topic and we'll report back at some point on that.
Anyone else wishing to be recognized?
Yes, hi, I'm Lori Yamachida, four seventy White Street Circle. And uh with respect to the walkable led rock day. I'm just concerned about the environmental impact. And specifically stormwater development. I I didn't bring the article with me, but the Lower Southford Township, the quarterly newsletter was talking about some product environmental projects that were completed. Um, my recollection is stated specifically that Lower Southford Township had to reduce or clean up stream erosion and sedimentation. So can you, I have to find out more about. I I guess the background on that article, um was the township specifically cited for reducing sediment? Uh, is that a general role? And then with all the development posts? How how can we meet that requirement?
I'll give the first crack at it. We have a very good engineer over here himself. The township is required from the Department of Environmental Protection to meet certain standards for stormwater discharge under what's known as our MS four permit. Okay, MS four permit is any municipality that has a stormwater system that discharges into the creeks. That is all the storm drains and inlets that are in the neighborhoods and the stormwater basins that may come off of different properties. The requirements are set for every municipality. It is not us that has been cited. It is every municipality. And then in addition, there have been certain creeks that have been evaluated by DEP and have what's known as a TMDL on them. A total maximum daily load of certain sediment and um nutrients that can be discharged into them. Both of those are items that we work on on a regular basis to reduce the amounts both that are going into our water force. In addition, every new development that comes into the community is required to get what's known as an NPDES permit, which is issued by the Conservation District on behalf of the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, which is the only way they're allowed to discharge stormwater from a construction site and then discharge stormwater from a post-construction site. And those are regulated very heavily with regards to what can be discharged and how they're treated. Most of what we're dealing with in our MS four permit, our TMDL, as well label of sins of the past. Prior to the mid nineties, stormwater management was very much just a basin and you hold water back from flooding. You didn't treat it really to keep sediment out of it. And we have done much better job in recent years in making these basins much more modern and treating both for nutrient sediment and also for flood control. So we are now working on projects um like we did just off of Alderford Road where we're retrofitting basins to try to improve this, the quality of stormwater that's coming from older neighborhoods that didn't have modern stormwater management that may have gone into it. That help explain a little bit?
Yeah, thank you for the background. So um with all these things that you mentioned, the NPDES and BMDL, uh, is that evaluated on like cumulatively with each proposed project? And how do we we look at that?
Okay, so um what the township's um permit for the MS four permit, that is separate from a development's NPDES permits.
The developments are NPDES.
NPDES permits is when you disturb over an acre of ground. And you need to get that approved. The MS four permit is a permit from uh DEP and that permit tells the municipality for each of its watersheds. And Lower Southford has uh Skipak, Indian Creek, uh Perkiom and Watersheds. For each of those watersheds, they have to reduce the amount of sediment. And without getting into too much detail, thereby reducing the amount of nutrients for each of those watersheds. And we have to do as part of the township projects. Stream restorations, um our repairing buffers in order to reduce the amount of sediment and thereby nutrients from those watersheds. And to those creeks.
And that permit, the MS four permit is reissued on a five-year rolling basis. Each time we have to resubmit for that, we have to both account for what previously was required and then whatever the new requirements are, it is cumulative in the standpoint of you're continuing to add new improvements to try to offset the um the impacts that have been done in the past.
When was the last time that was issued? What is the next time is coming on?
The next time, uh, the township will have to renew with termination, twenty twenty six.
Anyone else wishing to be recognized?
Mr. Chairman, if I can say something a little more about the walkable letter rock and if any of my colleagues want to chime in just uh to answer this card and Yamashita's question, yeah, she has a question as well. Walkable Letter Rock Study was a study that was completed already. What we're doing tonight is not necessarily voting on the study. We're acknowledging that did happen. Um notices were sent out to people within a radius, uh large miles, actually. So we did have people come here where it consisted of surveys, discussions, sharing of ideas, but nothing is said. So these are a bunch of suggestions that we can now look at. The survey has been done. I just want to clarify and hopefully it answers a question that we're not voting on anything tonight except recognizing that yes, the study happened. Yes, people came here and we had a moment to talk with stakeholders as well.
Actually, there were a lot of comments saying I was not notified of this, like I am within the range of where this would impact my property. It says it right in the report and a lot of people have the same reaction. So the people who in my vicinity were like, did get letters, but then there were people like all around us who did not um receive any kind of communication. Um, so I I do think that maybe uh whether it was lost or you know, not seeing a piece of mail that was um not seen, that's possible. But a lot of people had that feedback. Um, I also did notice that um it said in the report that it's a pretty even split, like people who were for it and against it. But just looking purely at what was reported there, it was very obvious it was lopsided in opposition. And I also know, I I actually like started to track who was sending emails. And the emails that are put in the report are about twenty shy from what I counted. So there weren't emails sent that were not placed into the report. So I just wanted to, you know.
No, no, I appreciate that and I can't account for letters that weren't received. I know obviously we can make better decisions and the more people are aware. Uh, which is why it did have some good turnout. It's not saying as any excuse, I agree, we want everybody there. But nothing is set in stone with where we're going to go in the future with this. So I definitely encourage you to stay involved with this as we continue to explore this. And if any of my colleagues.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, I mean, Jim, from what Kevin said, the the action tonight is really a closure of what was a grant application that funded the study. If we don't do the resolution, we won't get the money. So even if you're opposed to it, if you're township taxpayer, you want us to close this because we want to get the money to pay for what has been completed.
A hundred thousand dollars.
That's that's on. The next step is it's long-range planning, okay? And it is options that are out there for what could be done. There is not the money right now for the township call for anything to do this. And there are a number of different things that come into play about whether the letter rock bypass ever gets built. And that still has, we've been trying to get funding for that for.
Study and other stuff.
Yeah, forty years. So it's long-range planning and that was really the goal. So for anybody I know who is concerned about it, this isn't happening tomorrow. It is not creating uh so some of the concerns that are there. And quite frankly, each step of the way, when a project may be formed, there will be public opportunity comment. You know, the the whole series of studies and then if it is decided to go that route, engineering, stormwater management, all of the environmental issues that have to be, all of that has to be done for a project of that scope. So we are at the beginning of the beginning before the beginning of any of this. And I know it's raised consternation for people, but it was really just a study and when it comes down to it, so.
I would just say too, like when we came to the planning night, um there was all these columns. You know, which would you like to see happen first? But there was no no column. And my husband and I actually had through columns. And as we have no column. I would just really, you know, have just as, you know, a suggestion that if you're moving forward and you are collecting information. From everyone.
For the no call.
No, all very well appreciated, very well appreciated.
I think I think it's important to just reiterate too, when something does come up, obviously we have these in the background now. What happened now is we can look at the surveys that happened. Well, we had this many days, this many days. I know that I would, I'm guessing everybody else would too. The next thing is, okay, well now that we have this opportunity, when was this study done? You know, some people have left, some new people have come. Now we would obviously entertain more studies on that. But it helps us in the future when we have grant opportunities to say, we did a study on this, there might be a need, let's have a discussion.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, yeah, uh, Betty, Betty, Lori, Chadwick. Is it possible? I know we're just getting this resolved so that we can get the grant ready. But it's also just to put on record that it was spoken about and the proposal could be picked up later at any time. And we submit the noes that we know and petition that we have for the noes and put it on record.
Thank you. I'll swing you fine. I just want to organize.
Sure. Thank you. As part of our action tonight, we can recognize that the petition was received. So sure, it's now on the record.
With the um walkable weather. There we sound discussed. I guess first of all, I kind of tuned in late. And when I got links to information, uh there was not a link to the to the attachments. It was a hundred sixty-three page proposable. But it was over four hundred pages attachments. So obviously I wasn't able to to go through that information before putting in my comments. Is, I guess I'm looking for um, can someone tell me just a general process on these types of items with the various? Was, is that still, or could be the attachments? Um, are, is the proposal and the attachment still on the Lower Southford Township website?
Should be. The feasibility study is still there. I think there may even be a hard copy here if you want to come in and look at it. So there's, there's avenues to pursue to the extent you want to, want to take a look at it for sure.
Okay, were the attachments listed the same time the proposals, the four hundred ten pages?
No, I believe the attachments were once the um public comment period was completed, they were attached after that.
So.
So there was.
What period ended?
The proposal that was on there before the the touches came on after.
And? Close.
Uh, it's some, a month or so ago, I can't remember.
Just on understanding the attachments, four hundred pages were not available. Before the end of the public.
Well, the attachment for the public comment was worth, I guess, succinct or put together in that thirty-day period that now is on the website. So there was a period of time when it was needed by the consultant to end the public comment period and, you know, collect the data, as it were, and post it to the website.
I think if I could follow the nature of your question is, were the attachments relevant to providing a public comment? And the attachments, but no, but I think the, the, there's a chicken and egg issue here. You have a proposal that needs public comment. The public comment is made and then that public comment is added to the, as the attachments to what we're talking about. So there wasn't anything more, I think, that we were looking for, but it must.
No, so it's a feasibility study. So what happens then in the future is, let's say someone says, oh, hey, there's this grant available, half million dollars. Hey, we've got this feasibility study for walkable letter. Are there any components included in that feasibility study that we could garner that money to do that improvement? So that would be the next piece of this, right? We'd apply for that grant, whether, you know, whether we got it. And then it would go through its own process of public involvement, design, it's a whole litany of other, other encumbrances. Make sense?
The attachments was the additional information that we received from the public through surveys and other feedback.
Maybe, maybe we can talk off.
Sure.
My understanding is different because the attachments were in the table of contents. When I, when I saw the proposal.
They were true.
And I look for.
They were listening as many as you're gonna get them, right?
Maybe you just, maybe you might to not confuse, might be good to coordinate with Joe after the meeting for just to read. Yeah, have a one-on-ones to make sure what we're missing. Okay.
Don't see, might be. Anyone else wishing to be recognized? I see none. Uh, I can take a motion to approve the consent agenda items as listed on the agenda.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the amendment to the minutes as discussed in the work session yesterday by Mr. Shelley.
Second, moved in second and all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Committee reports zoning hearing board, Mr. Buke.
There are no applications.
Park Board.
Next, I'll leave that. Yep, so park work spring has sprung. There's a lot of excitement going. Um, our next meeting is going to be held off-site at Jacob Wright Park on April twenty-third. So if you come here on April twenty-third, you will find a polling place and not a parkour meeting. So go to Jacob Wright. Uh, we have a lot of different events coming up. One at Heckler Plains, which involves uh Civil War soldiers. That's on April sixth. Check that out. Uh, plant sale on May fourth at Heckler Plain Farmstead. A Perkium and Watershed Conservancy Plant Sale at the Wright Farmstead on May eleventh and twelfth. And a plant exchange also at Jacob Wright Farmstead on June first. So lots of activity.
Just add two, April eleventh, the the eleventh, right? Saturday will be um Perkium and Watershed is doing a cleanup and that will occur through many parks and many open spaces throughout the townships. You'll be people out collecting trash and voluntary efforts uh from that. I know the Boy Scout troop will be cleaning up all the plastic bags that load from the giant into the basin. It's an annual red fact.
Nice. Let's hope the weather is nicer than today.
Yeah.
Uh, Fire Chief.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Jesse Mantini, Assistant Fire Chief. Uh, the fire report for March twenty twenty-four, we had seventeen day calls, one night call for a total of eighteen calls. Three EMS assists, three fire alarms, two building fires, nine commercials, two elevator rescues, two vehicle fires, one building fire commercial. One electric fire outside, one gas odor leak outside, one vehicle accident standby, one woods or field fire, and one CO detector with no symptoms. Um, the call locations, fourteen of those were in Lower Southford. One was in Franconia, one was in Skipak, one Towne, and one Montgomery Township. Uh, we mutual aid provided three times and received four. Uh, there was one fire police only call. And we had a total fire personnel response of a hundred and fifty-nine people for an average firefighters per call of eight point eight four with six hours, fifty-seven minutes, and twenty-two seconds for in-service time.
Excellent. Very good. Uh, next up would be Freedom Valley Medical Rescue, need a report on this, yes.
I think we will start getting one next month. They've committed to a monthly report, one word.
Very good. Communications Committee, Kevin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, at our last meeting, uh, we discussed prior to that, uh, the idea of a welcome packet for new residents. Where did give its approval on that. So I took the suggestion, so the letter to our committee and we are excited to launch the new resident welcome packet. Our idea is to have a a packet to go to all residents. So map, flyer, a note from our chairman, welcome to the township. We've learned through surveys that a lot of people are not aware of all that our community has to offer, including our local. So we're excited to launch that. We meet again here on Donzoo on April seventeenth. We encourage all residents and business owners to attend and help improve communication between the township and its residents. Thanks, Kevin.
Very good, which reminds me of uh, to remind everyone of the upcoming meetings listed at the bottom of our agenda for all these various committees. The Recreation Authority, we did meet uh last week. The uh month of February, I'm wearing the winter time, so golf is not exactly uh high on everyone's list, but when the weather is nice, folks do come out. Uh, we did uh do a little better than we predicted on the budget. And it looks like uh projecting ahead for March uh may actually uh do even better against the budget. So all is good at the golf course when the weather is well. Very good. So moving on to unfinished business, uh, Resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh seven, authorized to the acceptance of the walkable letter rock feasibility study, which will uh permit us to get the grant funds of a hundred thousand dollars uh through DVR PC. We need this resolution to achieve that.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
Second, moved in second and all in favor, say. Oh, any, yeah, any questions?
Any further comments?
Any comments, any further comments? Kind of covered that base.
And all with the, I will amend my motion to uh further codify authorization to approve the resolution and the acceptance of the petition that will be presented by the neighbors uh with relating their concerns and opposition to aspects for all of these study. And then.
Moved in second and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next up will be the uh conditional use hearing for one ninety-six Main Street. And it is at this point, I pass it to our esteemed filing Andy Freeman to present the firm.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, at this point, we are going to open up a public hearing uh because the township has received a conditional use application from Mainland Five. That's Roman Newell Five LLC with regard to property at one ninety-six Main Street Harleyville. Uh, this property is zoned RO residential office zoning district. The applicant intends to redevelop the property with a one-story bank building with drive-through facilities, a one-story retail building, and four two-story apartment buildings containing a total of thirty-six dwelling units. Uh, pursuant to section one sixty-four dash sixty-two point sixteen C of the Township Zoning Ordinance, apartments, retail, commercial uses, banks, and the drive-through facilities for non-residential uses are permitted by conditional use as class three conditional uses in the RO district. Uh, just to refresh any everybody's recollection and for those in the audience who may not be familiar uh with this type of zoning proceeding, uh, conditional use is a permitted use um by law, provided that the applicant to demonstrate compliance with the specific criteria that are in the zoning ordinance with regard to the particular use. And there is not a high probability that such use or uses would result in an adverse impact to the pub, public health, safety, and welfare beyond what would normally be expected of such a use. Um, in terms of procedure, we will be a little bit more formal this evening than we are in our open meeting. Uh, we have a court scenographer here who's creating a transcript. That's required by Pennsylvania law. Uh, the applicant is represented by councils uh who will present the application and whatever testimony and exhibits uh the applicant wants to. And the applicant had the burden of proof to establish compliance with the requirements of the zoning ordinance. Uh, the board will be allowed to ask questions of the applicant's witnesses. And then if there are any members of the audience who are parties to the application, they will be allowed to ask questions of the applicant's uh witnesses. I'll describe what it means to be a party in a moment. Um, but this board has historically allowed uh members of the audience who are non-parties to also ask questions of the applicant. Um, so party status uh for the members of the public who may be here for this application. Uh, you can request to become a party to this proceeding. Uh, become a, becoming a party is uh optional. Uh, to become a party, you generally need to be located in close proximity uh to the property or be able to demonstrate that you would suffer a particular harm uh as a result of the proposed conditional use. As a party, uh, you're allowed to ask questions of the witnesses, as I mentioned. Uh, you are also allowed to present your own testimony and evidence. Uh, as a party, you're also entitled to receive a copy of this board's decision. And you may have a right to take an appeal to court if you don't like this board's decision. Uh, as a party, you're also subject to fraud examination by the applicant's counsel with regard to any testimony that you provide and any evidence that you present. Um, and with regard to matters such as your proximity to the property and the harm you allege that you may suffer from the proposed use. Uh, now you do not need to be a car party, as I mentioned, to um make comment on this application or even ask some questions of the applicant's witnesses. Uh, at the end of the applicant's case and at the close of all the testimony, uh, any member of the public who wants to make a statement for or against this application can do so, uh, whether you are a party or not. So with that explanation of party status, is there anybody in the audience who would like to be a party to this application other than, of course, the applicant? Ma'am? No, that's fine.
Yeah.
I understand, yeah.
It could be, but okay.
Okay, great. Anybody else? You can state your name and address for the record, please. Great. All right, so you're gonna have to bear with me for just a moment longer here. I have a a slew of exhibits that I have to mark uh for the record. These are township exhibits on this application. And then I'll be done talking for a little while and I'll turn it over to Mr. Weiner, who is here for the um, the applicant. Uh, so we'll mark as exhibit T one, uh, the conditional use application submitted by the applicant on uh May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. Exhibit T two is going to be a letter from the applicant dated May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, which grant an extension of time. Uh, the time requirements under the Pennsylvania Municipality's Planning Code to conduct an initial hearing on this, an initial hearing on this application. Uh, T three is a letter dated February sixteen, twenty twenty-four from the applicant's counsel amending the application to request thirty-six residential apartments instead of the twenty-nine residential apartments initially proposed. Uh, T four is a plan prepared by Richard C. Mast Associates PC titled Conditional Use Plan for one ninety-six Main Street prepared for the applicant dated May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, last revised May eighth, twenty twenty-four. T five is a review letter from CKS Engineers dated March twenty-fourth, twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. T six is a review letter from McMahon dated June twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. T seven is a review letter dated May eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. P seven is a review letter dated May eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Excuse me, excuse me, that should be March eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. From Claire Warner of the Montgomery County Planning Commission. P eight are the meeting minutes of the Lower Southford Township Planning Commission meeting, which occurred on January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. P nine are the planning commission meeting minutes for the meeting that occurred on February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four. And P ten will be the meeting minutes from the planning commission meeting, which occurred on March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four. Uh, once those minutes are approved by the planning commission, which I would assume would happen at their next meeting in April. P eleven is the proof of publication of notice from the Sutherland Independent verifying that tonight's hearing was advertised on March seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. And March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. P twelve is a verification by Michael Bukey. That the property was posted, there was notice of tonight's hearing on March twentieth, twenty twenty-four. P thirteen is the list of properties. And persons that were mailed notice of tonight's hearing by first class mail. Uh, P fourteen is a rendering of the proposed exterior renovations by Core State Group for Chase. Dated March sixth, twenty twenty-four. P fifteen is going to be a two-page document. With page one titled one ninety-six Main Street Retail Building B Front Elevation and page two titled one ninety-six Main Street Retail Building B Side Elevation. Both of those are dated March eighth, twenty twenty-four. P sixteen is going to be a rendering titled. One ninety-six Main Street's ten-unit apartment building perspective dated March eighth, twenty twenty-four. P seventeen is a floor plan document titled. One ninety-six Main Street ten you, penny unit apartment building floor plan dated March eighth, twenty twenty-four. And last but not least, we have a three-page document. It's going to be marked P eighteen. Page one is a front elevation of the ten-unit apartment building. Page two is a side elevation of that building and page three is a rear elevation of that building. All of those pages are dated March eighth. Twenty twenty-four. So with that, Carl. We call yours.
So what, what actually my administrative point, uh, the, the township. Exhibit that you listed, which is the conditional use plan, I don't know whether you read it wrong or whether it's printed wrong, but the last revision date is March eighth.
Or credit.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Uh, I wasn't listening. Good evening, uh, members of the board. Carl Weiner, representing the applicants. Uh, the property which is the subject of this hearing is located at the intersection of Main Street and Quarry Road. Consists of approximately five acres. Uh, the property is zoned, as noted before, RO, uh, Residential Office. The applicant is proposing to develop this property under the provisions of the conditional use. Class three provisions under section, uh, sixty-two point sixteen. As a mixed-use development, uh, which will consist of. Four two-story apartment buildings containing a total of thirty-six apartments, uh, a bank building with a drive-through. Uh, and a retail building whose use is as of yet undetermined. Uh, the site will be accessed from both Quarry Road and, uh, Sunday Town Pike or Main Street. Um, but the main entrance will be off of Quarry Road. In conformance with the requirements that the main entrance be off a road of lesser classification. The proposed plan, uh, addresses all conditional use requirements regarding access. Emergency access, internal circulation and potential connectors to adjoining property. Uh, as to the proposed drive-through, uh, the drive-through meets stacking and circulation requirements. Uh, and, uh, the details regarding lighting and landscaping will be, uh, dealt with during the land development process. Uh, the proposed buildings, uh, contain peaked roofs. They have residential, uh, facades consisting of residential character materials. They are residentially scaled, so they meet the requirements of the conditional use provisions relating to. The residential character of non-residential buildings in this district. Our witness this evening will be Rick Mast, who's been a practical engineer involved in this for some time and. He'll review with you the details of the conditional use plan. Keeping in mind, as I'm sure the board is aware, that again, this is just the first step of the process for the actual conditional use. For the proposed, uh, uses on this property. If approved by the board, we will certainly need to come back for a full land development review, which is in the normal course of business. With that having, uh, said, I made it every mess. Sworn in.
Please, you're right in. Some sort of firm tells me about giving this proceedings.
Richard Mast and A S T. I know Mr. Mast has appeared before you, uh, numerous times and has been qualified as an expert witness. So I would just ask him to confirm that exhibit A one is a true and correct copy of his. Uh, resume and his work in, in educational experience and as a DB qualified again as a professional engineer.
I have no objection. Okay.
Rick, are you familiar with the property that is subject to this hearing?
I am.
And, uh, referring to exhibit A two in the booklet submitted, exhibit submitted by the applicant. Uh, would you please describe the property?
Uh, so the property is located at the. South corner of Quarry Road. Which is Township Road and Main Street or Sunday Town Pike. Route sixty-three, which is a, a state highway. Um. It's rectangular in shape. It's, um, basically outlined on the plan that's on the board. Um, its area. How the township defines Grove's area, which is the area of the tracks to the legal rights of the way. Is five point one nine acres. Uh, presently. Uh, there is one single family dwelling that is on. Close to the corner of Main Street and Quarry Road. Um, that dwelling, uh, is. Tied in with public sewer and public water. Uh, at this time, it has a driveway on both streets. And there is, uh, one outbuilding, a garage. All of those features, uh, are supposed to be removed with. The proposed development.
And, um. Okay. The main access of all of this is off of Quarry Road, is that correct?
The proposal is. Terms of access configuration. Yes, there is one principal access that's proposed on Quarry Road. It's about midway along the property frontage. Uh, that access is proposed to be. Full access. It would have right. In, right out, left in, left out, all movements. Um, I did. In the review of the conditional use plan, spent some time with township traffic engineer to determine what the best. Point of access. Uh, is, I believe the plan represents the best point of access. And we've also discussed, uh, through. Of a review process. Uh. Proposed improvements to the highway to allow for the access. There is a secondary access that is proposed on Sunday Town Pike or Main Street Route sixty-three. And that is proposed at the greatest distance possible from the intersection. Um. So it would be the easternmost point of the property frontage along Main Street. And that is proposed to be, uh, limited if turning movements. It will have a right in and a right out. And it may be permitted to have a left in depending on. Pendot's review, since it is a state highway, it will have to undergo a. Highway occupancy permit process. Pendot will. Ultimately determine whether we can have a left in or left or not. But there is a turn lane at that location. Uh, will not be permitted to have a left turn out. That. Access.
Now, with respect to the, uh, apartment buildings that are, uh, sought to be, uh, built on this property, referring to exhibits, uh, A, three, B and C. Uh, in footprint, can you please describe any?
Um, I'm not looking at the exhibits, so can you just tell me what the exhibit is? That's A one. Yeah. It's a three A. Exhibit three A, three A, who just the, uh. So exhibit three A shows a front elevation. Of, um. The larger two, the four of the paid apartment buildings. So. They would be, um. The easternmost two buildings that order. Take care. That's the exhibit. Um, and I think importantly to note, um. On the elevations of our, the residential materials being used, it's either. Uh, siding material or stone. Uh, the roof lines are varied to give it some interest and. Linear. To break up the long linear, uh, patterns in the roof lines. It's got intersecting gables that you can see. And the facade also has offsets, uh. Along the front, it's kind of break up. The length of the building. The two end units or the end sections of the building will have entry on the side of the buildings again, just prior to, uh. To add some interest to the overall footprint. Um, and there are several smaller roof lines along the facade to all oriented towards giving it's. More architectural interest. Uh, in the building. There are certain, uh, criteria also in the part of this, for this huge. This building does comply with those criteria. Okay, the next. I'm, I'm waiting till it gets up on this. But, yep, there's, okay. This elevation shows a typical side elevation of any of the apartment buildings. So you can see the side entry that I was talking about, also an intersecting gable roof line, so it breaks up the building. Uh, and that would also be the side that face. Quarry Road for the building that is oriented perpendicular to Quarry Road. You can see that there are decks provided as well. You can't tell from the elevation that those decks are not over top of one another. They're actually offset laterally also. The next exhibit. Shows the rear elevation. Again. That would be an A unit building that would face Quarry Road or that side would face Quarry Road. I will note though, that even though that's facing Quarry Road, it's somewhat removed from Quarry Road, let's say. Action basin. We the building in Quarry Road. Giving landings and things like that to help soften the view of that. Uh, but in that view, again, you can see even the rear elevation, it's offsets along the. The building facade that has intersecting gable roots. And the decks also add some, they are not one above the other, they're offset.
Rick Carl, just for the record, that's three C you're talking about?
That's three C.
A three C.
So you have three A D's.
Okay, thank you.
So next, um, with respect to the proposed redevelopment. Can you please describe that for the board in referring to exhibits? For A or B?
Two views show the front side elevation of the proposed retail building. Uh, the proposed retail building is oriented, uh. By Main Street or Sunday Town Pike. This would be the building that would be the most e- easternmost part of the property. The view that you're looking at is the front, the, it's actually the front of the building, but it faces Quarry Road or faces the proposed bank. Um, so that would really be the view from inside the site. But much like the apartments, uh, the materials used are residential in nature. Stone on the building will match. Those at the apartment and nearby buildings. Uh, the intersecting roof lines, uh, and the window styles all geared towards. Residential scale. Architecture, parents. As required in the zoning ordinance, it also beats the architectural criteria that the RO District has. The next exhibit. I think the car was said to be for the. Is the same building, the retail building, but that is the side that faces, uh, Main Street. So that's the side of the building. There's no proposed entrance, uh, along that side, but. Again, the building was made interesting with roof lines. Uh, different sized windows and, uh, some variation of materials. Again, the stone that's displayed. In that elevation would match the stone throughout the project.
Referring to, uh, exhibits by A and by B, please describe the proposed bank building.
This is the proposed, uh, Chase Bank. This building is. Um, the smallest of the buildings, it's three thousand three hundred. Plus or minus square feet and footprint. Um, it's oriented at the corner of Main Street and Quarry Road. Um, and as the other buildings were, it's proposed to have, uh, residential type materials. Primarily it's stone and the sections that are stone again will match the rest of the community. Uh, even though the rendering looks different, the intent is to have a stone match throughout. Then the siding materials is a lap siding, lapped, L A P, lapped siding material. As you could see on a residential type structure. Uh, the ordinance requires for a building in this size for eighty percent of the roof lines to be. Uh, sloped at a minimum of six on twelve. This complies with that requirement. Um. I will point out, um. There is a slight difference between the exhibits. That are in the booklet and what's on the, uh, board here, and that is that the road names been corrected. In the booklet, they should refer to the correct. Road names, quarry road. Just going to quickly go through that. The east. Elevation, which is the upper left on that plan, is what will face Main Street. So from Main Street, you would see that view. The upper right elevation, it's the north elevation, that would face quarry road. The bottom left is the west elevation. That's really the drive-up ATM, so that I'll call it shed edition at the rear. Is where there will be an ATM and drive up to. There is no drive-up teller at this location, drive-up ATM. Then the final elevation on the lower right is the south elevation. And that would be the view that you would see from the. Adjacent proposed retail building or the driveway from within the site itself. Five B, um, has been one of. So that was a proposed dumpster area enclosure. Working with the planning commission. They asked us to go back to the stage to see if the dumpster enclosure could be eliminated. Did do that and they did agree to eliminate the outside dumpster area. And they'll handle their trash.
So going back to exhibit A two, the conditional use plan, um, and with respect to the drive-through. Associated with the bank building. What is the purpose of the drive-through leading to the bank?
So as I mentioned, the bank does have a proposed, um. Drive-up ATM. It's not a teller window with. Active. Person at the drive-through. It's only a. Place where you can drive up and introduce an ATM. Um. There is six cars of stacking which exceeds the ordinance requirement shown on the plan. And there is a full bypass lane as well. So if you. End up in that lane and you wish to proceed. Without going through and running through and do that, that entire area. Both the drive-through lane and the bypass lane are one-way circulation. Uh, I think it's important to point out that no part of the drive-through. Conflicts with any, uh, parking area, parking space, maneuvering, aisle. Or loading area. It's, it's completely independent.
What has even stacking that's provided?
Uh, six cars of stacking are displayed, actually is. Uh, probably greater than that, but we've displayed six cars of stacking.
Expect to, uh, represent lighting and, and the landscaping requirements. How will that be dealt with?
Uh, similar to other conditional uses that we've done in the immediate area, um. Uh, the applicant intends to comply with the conditional use criteria for both landscape and lighting. Uh, but typically since those components interact with a lot of other detailing on the plan, with grading, with stormwater management. Uh, many other types of landscape requirements and lighting requirements for other aspects of the site. Um. Will handle the details of it during the more detailed land development process.
Focusing on the issue of parking, what parking is provided for the apartment buildings?
Um, the apartment buildings, um, is a separate, uh, driveway with parking on either side of the driveway. Uh, that would come off the main access proposed from Quarry Road. Um, the requirement in the ordinance is two units per apartment. Um the requirement in the ordinance is two units per apartment unit. Parking spaces per apartment unit, there's thirty six proposed apartment units that would yield seventy two parking spaces. And we're proposing a total of seventy six spaces. Um and within those seventy six spaces, there are certain areas for landscaping, islands. And the trash collection area as well. And on the other side of the main access, what parking is provided for the uh. Non residential portion of the property? Um off the main access from quarry road, um there are kind of two basic parking areas, one of them is parallel to the. Sides of the two buildings, the retail building and the bank, and the others perpendicular to those buildings were parallel to Main Street. Um that parking does meet the parking requirement for the two uses um. However, I think because of the configuration, they could be shared too, so it's not necessarily defined which parking spaces are for which use since they're all the same area. Some of them may be shared. For uh access to the site from the roadways, um what provisions are made for any sort of emergency access? Um there is an emergency access proposed um. Little bit to the right of where the cursor is, it's basically the southernmost point of the frontage along quarry road. That would be an emergency access between the. Parking spaces for the residential apartments and quarry road. And what design has been incorporated to accommodate for potential future connection within joining property? The ordinance um. Encourages and in some respect requires. Shared access and goal is to eliminate the amount of access, access points, particularly to Main Street, so if you zoom out a little bit. Like so you can see the uh sunny town plate or Main Street frontage. What's um in the darker gray there is a proposed access easement uh that could be shared with the adjoining property if it ever became feasible. Um so that if the township desires could be an actual easement that would guarantee access to the neighboring property. The idea of consolidating access points, but we've also provided a secondary point of access. On the southern part of it. Common property line with the daycare. And that would be to the south uh of the apartment units. Again, if the township feels that that is necessary and willing to provide us. A secondary access point at that location as well. What internal pedestrian circulation has been provided in in pedestrian connection to quarry road? The sidewalk areas are shaded on the plan um. The apartment areas all on both sides of the parking has sidewalk along wherever there's a a building. So you would have access from the parking areas to the all of the building entrances. Uh at the end, adjacent to the emergency access that we just talked about, there's a connection to the sidewalk along quarry road. We're proposing sidewalk on the full front edge of quarry road and the full front edge of Main Street. Uh sidewalk throughout the non residential uses on. Both sides of the parking areas to provide access to the buildings. Um and one side of the main access drive. The access point coming from quarry road. During the review process, the planning commission asked us to consider during the land development stage, providing an additional internal crossing. Uh within the parking area and also in a connection from the sidewalk along Main Street. And we agree that we would conspire with that. And um do you anticipate any. Unanticipated adverse impact on surrounding properties? No. Will the proposed development cause any undue traffic congestion? No, uh obviously, traffic is a pretty big consideration in the area. Worked with the county consultants to develop the access points. There was a traffic engineer involved with the project who submitted preliminary traffic data. Not only traffic counts, but some assessment of the traffic counts and how the traffic would be handled. And as you know, the intersection of Main Street and sunny town plate is also a signalized. Access. And will this proposed use have any uh unanticipated impact on township services, public services, or uh water sewer, police and fire protection? No. And I realize uh we're not in the land development stage yet, but generally, can you explain for the board how stormwater management will be handled? There um there were two areas designated uh closer to quarry road, they're shaded, but. One near the apartment units, one near the. Close bank. Those two basins will provide work quality management. As well as peak runoff control. For the proposed previous cover. There is also a drainage feature that runs through the track. Um we're not proposing to interfere with that feature. That provides drainage from the properties to our east, uh there's an existing intention basin which happens also to the property. Um so we are proposing up of the where cross it with the post widening along quarry road and opposed apartment driveway. To leave it in its. Natural state. And uh was this application reviewed by the Montgomery County Planning Commission? Uh yes, it was. You had to attach to exhibit G six. Can you tell the board what the uh. County Plan Commission recommendation? Uh in general, the county uh supports the application. Summarize, we wish to iterate the Montgomery County Plan Commission generally supports the applicant's proposal. We believe that our suggested revisions will better achieve lower salary. Fixed residential, non residential development. And uh we'll point out that we have. Applied to their suggestions as well. And plane was reviewed by uh the township plan commission as well, correct? It was, and what was their recommendation? Um they recommended that the initial use plan uh be accepted along with the attached exhibits at the March of the. Nothing further.
The board and any questions? Now, a couple. Fireline. Um. The area, the thirty foot buffer to the, I'll call it the southwest of the plan, which would be to the left of the plan is exhibit on A two. What would that landscape buffer look like? Mr. Math.
That is a uh median use buffer or medium intensity buffer is called. Because of the existing residential uses, those multifamily residential use. So that is a minimum number of trees required, evergreen trees, shade trees, ornamental trees and shrubs. Uh the shrubs will be oriented. Really to form a buffer of the parking spaces themselves. And then the ornamental shade and buffer and uh evergreen trees would be between those shrubs and the property line. Um I don't recall the specific density of those off the top of my head, but it is a. Uh dense buffer.
Objective screen absolute property from the adjacent properties, correct, and you guys committed to. Confirming to that requirement in the land development process, um second question. Uh. The architecture, I'll go to A five, which is the architecture for the Chase building. Uh. Building in the upper right. I recognize it has a residential feel all the way around, except I. I really, I I'm still concerned or I am concerned with the what is the Wethersley elevation. Um and also part of the norly, the rear of the building that looks like a bit of a bunker um. And I'm assuming that they have their H V A C equipment on the roof there and they had to put a roof to hide that. My concern is that's the one piece that doesn't really look residential in nature and. Unfortunately for the applicant, one of my favorite pizza places, so on Rich Pike and Plymouth Meeting. And that is immediately adjacent to where a new Chase Bank branch was just built that looks identical to this, so I actually know what that looks like in person. Um and my question would be, I think it could be softened if a pent roof could be introduced. Similar to the roof that's over the A T M bump out, but if that was continued along the rear elevation. To the left of it and then maybe wrapped around to the side elevation, so it would just soften that and provide some slope or. Some residential scale to that portion of the building, because that's gonna be. Visible every time someone drives up quarry road, that's the. The rear end you're looking at, I know there's going to be landscaping and other things, but that would be the rear end you're looking at that'd be nice to soften it somehow. Is that a possibility?
When you uh can you describe that roof, just so I understand?
So a pet would be similar to the roof that is over top of the A T M. Okay, it would be, you know, on a forty five out, just uh attached at that same same height across there, just continued around. So it would act as like a little porch over top of that door and then wrap to the other side, so it would just. Break that wall up and provide a softer softer feel to what is the. Uh block nature of that portion of the building.
Very similar to what's on the east.
Yeah, similar to the pent roof to cross the front door on the east.
Seems feasible, I cannot commit to that for Chase Bank, certainly require whether it could be done um. I and I. Don't know whether that would improve the building or not, I think that's a matter of opinion, I do want to point out. Two things, and that is. First, you're looking at. A straight on elevation rather than a three dimensional. Perspective view, so I think that will alter. Uh the view of the building, if you're seeing the roof lines. From an angle. Um. That. Building, you are correct, the parapet walls that extend above the shed for the drive through in is for the purpose of hiding H B A C. Equipment on the ceiling, so they won't be visible at the ground level, I think it's a good thing.
And I would agree with that, right?
So there is a purpose to it. Um but. I think you can certainly make the request of it. Useful addition.
I think they've obviously altered what is their standard branch from what I've seen with the other items, I don't think that's in. Great addition, but would definitely meet what the goals of the R O zoning ordinance is. When you look at the other design for the commercial building on there, that truly does meet that at residential scale, I think that would help just soften that looking. I think the problem is it's such the visible end of it from an exterior view. So. The other comment that I then I'll be, the siding materials you mentioned um. Are they a hardy equivalent, are they a vinyl, I don't have a preference either way, just curious as to what the, is it a party like a cement? So on the Chase Bank and on the, how it on the residential and on the other commercial buildings.
That siding would be be vinyl.
Vinyl, say so, the okay, apartments. And there is a require, there will be a requirement and some sort of deed restriction that the. Colors and materials will stay consistent. Throughout both the residential and non residential, not only in the beginning, but for future users.
That that's, you can agree to that.
No, if if Chase Bank no longer wants to do the bank branch and Key Bank wants to come in and they have a different branding look, the bank branch will still look the same. That's the goal I'm looking for from that that level deed restriction. Um the other comment is, just so that we have it on our record, I know the planning commission asked for it. I would echo as a condition, the sidewalk connections that were asked for by the planning commission. From Main Street to the the non residential component and within, so that it does fully become pedestrian.
We we agree with those recommendations.
I just want to make sure it got on the board. Record from that standpoint. Those are my comments for now.
Anyone else? I uh noticed on your plot plan. Yeah, I noticed on the plot plan, you have the uh decks shown in within the building setback lines, that's allowable?
Yes. Okay, it is.
And also the uh retail space. Um. One of you can stipulate to leaving that as retail space, suppose it down the road, we have all the apartments built and then we decide somehow. Merelyously, the retail space turns into work apartments. Like see that stay retail space.
Yeah, I've seen.
Cause there are there are projects that I had to, they didn't uh designate up for it, but thank you.
Anyone else? I have a few questions and some conditions I'd like consider and some some discussion I'd like to have colleagues as well. Um you said that you would adhere to the uh. The county planning commission uh. Particularly, it's mentioned right away, are you dedicate, are we going to have it right away there, are you going to adhere to those terms?
When you say right away, I think you mean public access to the sidewalk along. Public roads and yes, we would provide probably through an easement's access to to make sure that there is public access to all of those sidewalks.
Again, I just thought that quite, just so we're very clear. Not just in the public right away, that would also be any of the sidewalk on the internal of the property. My point being, if the adjacent future driveway access even were ever used, if someone were to do something on the next property. Not only would we want vehicular access, but we would want pedestrian access to connect to the sidewalks throughout the site.
Correct.
So it would be to any of the sidewalk throughout the development, correct, so sorry.
Oh, that's okay, that's that's, and that that is, Mr. Mass, what I meant specifically with the right here uh. One A, under transportation, that address. Um also forgetting the crosswalks, but then the address to be more significantly recognizable as in their plans.
Um I think they've recommended a few additional crosswalks, which we would comply with, but but all of the crosswalks. Will be signed and painted as well.
Yeah. Um and I think Mr. Sharon was kind of touching on it, but the other thing I wanted to see is that we could have in writing that the area north of the drainage would never be used for residential. As well. It was something that was brought up at long planning commission meetings.
That's similar to the restriction of the retail.
That's what I was saying, exactly, it's the only other comment that would add condition. That is something that would be done then. Thanks. My my only other uh. My only other concerns with this, and I do have some concerns, it's uh in regards to the timing. Um I do feel it's relevant in this conditional use, I'd like to just mention to our board. Um January second, we advertised in the R O amendment. January twenty fourth, uh this applicant appeared to our planning commission for twenty two minutes, uh comments were that we were holding pattern. When the ordinance is passed, meeting staff. Um that Chase had already signed the lease, at this point. We were not allowed to have a bank in there, that was not changed. February seventh is when we voted for that ordinance, at the February twenty eighth, planning commission. Um some of the comments that were made is, we don't know how much of the plan is to change, I shared that with you at our last month's meeting advertising. Um Mr. Mass said he wanted to nail down some important items, other comments were that there's raised, concerns were raised and they will think about. On March sixth, this is why I didn't feel it relevant to advertise this conditional use. Um we received. March eleventh year, a revised conditional use, our meeting was at the March sixth, since that we have. One, two, three, four, eleven different changes. Um in fact, three A, three B, Mr. Mess, you started with, it's important to note on elevation, there has was no discussion. On elevations prior to when we advertised. And I appreciate all you share, three A, B, C, there was also no mention at the planning commission when we advertised about the stone displayed. Um that was very relevant, that was twelve minutes of information that you gave us that we did not advertise. For those reasons, um see, March sixth, we advertised a conditional use, March eleventh, I received the revised conditional use. And yes, there was a planning commission at March twenty seven. But uh for these reasons, I feel, correct me if I'm wrong, we have forty five minutes, forty five days to render decisions, I correct that after this? I think we should consider tabling this as for all interested parties, seeing as we have people as well, to have adequate time to review the revised plan. Um and I think that's one reason why we should. Delay this, I don't think we have a need to vote quickly, one of the things we can also see is, see how that request to Chase Bank goes, I mean, we don't know what they're gonna say, if I say no, we're not gonna do that. Um another question, when was that lease for Chase Banks, I'm curious.
I don't have the answer to that, Corey.
I know it, but is it correct, though, it was a January meeting that you said that uh. Chase did sign the lease, it just seems like a very risky thing to do from a business standpoint before that ordinance is passed, I was curious about that. Um that's my take on it, uh Mr. Mass, we also said at the last meeting, um when we asked originally, when the, sorry, it was at the. Last, the February twenty eight planning commission meeting, when asked to consider the area between the drainage that I asked you north of drainage, never to be used as residential. You replied that that's what zoning is for, zoning is supposed to determine the intensity and the uses that are allowed, not other agreements. If you felt that way, I know you did originally reach out. Or a conditional use where you recall we couldn't have it, May twenty sixth of twenty twenty three. We advise you to go to the zoning hearing board, instead we're here at the conditional use. Once again, gentlemen, I think we should table this time, uh make sure that all, make sure we check with Chase and give adequate time to go over this process.
I think my only comment would be, I think some things were convoluted in what you just noted on process and. What will go to the zoning hearing board versus a conditional use? What will go to the zoning hearing board versus a conditional use, what is before tonight is all allowed per ordinance, because we did amend the ordinance that was brought to our attention and. There were a lot of uses that were proposed or could have been proposed on here, but financial institutions were not one of them that were allowed. However, based on many of the other uses that could have been provided, like an auto zone or things along that line. I at least thought financial institution was one of the least owners compared to some of the other ones that were allowed, so allowing it made sense. Um, with regards to the plan, the purpose of advertising a hearing is so that we can get to the point, so that the plans and the presentation can be made to this body. We are supposed to be. Basically agnostic on the application until it becomes, it comes before us, so they can present their evidence and testimony. As to how they've met the conditional use. Our purpose now tonight will be, did they meet the burden of that. Conditional use requirement of presenting evidence that they've met what is uh, stated in the ordinance. Whether we vote tonight or later, that's a whole different story, but from a process standpoint, it does well. But the purpose is, is to get to a hearing where the evidence in its final form was presented to this board, which they've done, for good or ill. I will say the final comment I would have, and I'm. I would like this to be conditioned upon Chase revising their elevation. And then that's up to the applicant to decide whether or not they can accept that as a condition. My sense is it's not an owner's condition and they should be able to get to it, but that would be between them and their tenant. If they can't. The conditional use still stands and they have to deal with it, so that would be the way I would handle that particular issue.
If I may too, one thing I should have added, I think it is important to add, I did have a discussion with Joe about the procedure. Joe explained that the procedure was done correctly. This is a procedural thing. No shot, you know, to the applicant, I don't blame them about this. I mean, I think that we're setting precedent by rushing it, by rushing this procedure. Yes, we could do contention on that. But at the same time, I mean, the plan's before us. Look, look at this. You guys are all looking at the same time. There's no sidewalk up here. That was one of the comments I was gonna comment on. It's, there's no sidewalk. I circled it right there. So this, we got the plans at three thirty. That was a question I had. There's a sidewalk up there, so I cross that question off. We're all sitting here looking at this.
But the plan that has, the the plan that has been presented into. Evidence, as applicant exhibit two does show the sidewalk, that was requested previously.
Which was dated March twenty-fifth, is that correct? And regardless, for that brief. Smart, I think the planning commission was March twenty-seventh and that plan was dated at the same time. Uh, my point is, so still, you're right. Okay, this is the right stuff. Well, I didn't have this information right away. Looking at it now, I think it's safe to say that there's other interested parties who may also want to have a little moment. I'm not saying, you know, how I'm gonna vote. I don't know yet. However, I don't feel comfortable making a vote now. That's that's my take, but I did one for the record to say I did check with the procedures. When I go about anything I haven't seen before, I look it up. I have never, I couldn't find any information, so I told that to Joe. This, this is procedurally accurate, but. Again, I think that's something that we should have a discussion at a later time for.
Just, if I may just.
Any other questions or comments from the board to the end?
Except I have just a couple of quick questions. The easements that are shown on the plan, if you were. Um, successful in getting this conditional use. And then entered the land development process, those would be memorialized in writing, I assume?
Correct, again, that's why this is just an initial part of this process. And during my development, all of that would be fleshed out.
That's all there, yeah, right? At this point, we're gonna ask if there's any questions of the audience? Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to ask a question of Mr. Mass?
Say your name.
Andy Kraynak, Case Bank.
Uh, K R A Y N A K. Uh, one eighty-five, very dry. Um, I saw a question about the retention basis, what rate of rain are they designed for?
The ordinance, uh, the township's ordinance and also the uh. Federal M P D S requirements required signed up to a hundred-year storm, basically, so it's a frequency of the storm. And also the lower storms as well.
Right, uh, just my only, my reason for asking is because. Even the storms like today and the last, what we've had last few weeks. Water is flooding out of the uh. Little wetland area onto the road. And that's without the fifty-four, four percent proposed impermeable coverage. So it's designed for a hundred-year flood, hundred-year.
I'm gonna second that. And I also, um. Question, uh, I I can't believe you seriously have you both of this. They flood their whole town. So if you're, if the, if the design is based on a hundred-year plan. New year, what's that, that, first of all. Most of that data is irrelevant, it doesn't change. Secondly, you just go there and see it on a regular basis. I I I agree with. I'd like to see the plans and I'd also like to ask about, um. What did the county planning commission suggest? What were their suggestions? I could see that, I didn't see this.
Yeah, they they marked a copy of the letter. It's a copy here.
So just to respond to the stormwater management concerns. I I did not state that it presently was designed to handle the hundred-year. It is unfamiliar, we had. Uh, intersection, drove by it today and appeared by other rainstorms, just to see how it performs, and I agree. Present circumstance. It does not perform, so part of this plan is to improve the drainage a lot more.
Want me to review the planning commission?
And I think you had a copy, she had the degree that we're gonna give her in a sec.
Right, if I may just comment also, just, I think it was noted before, there are multiple steps in the process to this application. This is the beginning with a conditional use application, which is really just asserting that they've met what is the zoning threshold. If this was a by right use without conditional use, this just wouldn't have been necessary. They would have gone right to land development. This is an extra step in the process for this particular use, which I think you're aware of. The primary stormwater review that will be done is gonna be done at the land development process with the preliminary plans that are submitted. Our township engineer, Ms. Fountain over here, will review them thoroughly, and at the same time, the M P D F permanent process, which is reviewed by the conservation district. Will be reviewed thoroughly to meet those particular issues that you're talking about from a stormwater standpoint. So there's other, there's more process after this to come on that, on that particular issue.
And and if everything is done right, that should go away. It's all spoken, it's designed to do that. Uh, even with the extra impermeable surface there.
Yeah, so I'm gonna show at this point, it will in the future, firstly.
What they really had to do now is show that they've provided adequate space on the plan. To construct what's necessary to meet those. Now, the burden is in, they're gonna, if if they get this approved. They now need to conform with all that and they've gotta live with the framework that has been. Either approved or not by this board under this plan, and if the space isn't big enough and they have to lose some units to make it work, well, that's their risk, not on us. We're not guaranteeing them anything from that standpoint.
But well, they they come back to change it, but it would be fewer units it'd be to make the stormwater management group.
Correct, it's their burden to make it work. Correct. It's, it's the all end, it's the all of that property.
Mrs. Gray, do you have any more questions or does anybody else have any questions they'd like to ask?
Um, I think this will be addressed later, but it was just about the the. The traffic angle we reported to. When people turn into that little. Hard going to that little driveway. Um, for your intersection, I mean, I know it a lot, and I'm so close to the two. The intersections where it's recording, but. People can't turn left on the floor, you know, and someone's trying to turn into that driveway and. So that's something that I wanna. Should that's addressed. But that's flat means. The other one is about that, two things for the um, emergency access. So, um. If there's emergency. Then need it, um. Be close to. I I I know, I think about that, it's, uh, not sitting while with me for different reasons, but I'll think about it. The other one is the track pan, the the dumpster for the. Um, parts, that's right next to the better property. I don't know, better than you, let me see. I don't know whether to move, so I was texting. Um, I'm concerned about it and I'm. Sad with that, so it's gonna leave that. Away from the redkins, because they're five. Isn't that?
I mean, that's something. Asian port, but also keep in mind, what you're not seeing on this plan is the heavy screening that's going to provide. I'm sorry. No, no. It's the bottom level screening of evergreens, trunks. There's a specific wire. Under subdivision, that's the word. It's not just throwing in just a row of bushes. And you, you know, again, I invite you to participate in the land development process.
Can there be an enclosure around that?
There is. They'll also have a a wall of some sort built around those to screen that, so with all the bushes and trees.
And just to answer the comment with regards to the stacking along quarry road where the entrance is. The design of that is to have that entrance further west. To south, whichever direction you wanna say that is, from Main Street, so that all the stacking that would occur for the left-turning traffic out onto Main Street. Can stack, and then you're past that to be making the turns into this development. That, that's why it's in, I mean, that's much further into the uh, into quarry road than obviously where that. That driveway, which is only like two car lengths from the intersection, it's a disaster.
That's right, that driveway is about where the only.
Yeah.
Demarcation is on the right turn.
You're welcome to keep that. It's all yours.
I saw a hand over here, man, just uh, just come forward a little bit and state your name, um, for the record.
All that. B A N C R O F T. Uh, three, two, one, Kinseyver. Um, this is fascinating, thank you. Um, it's worth doing this. Uh, I was at the survey for the. The Letter Rock, so I'm kind of aware of this building. Thank you for all the information. I would like to know. Where you are, like, you guys have to approve it, um, but where does the public come in? Like, you guys sent out things for Letter Rock to all of us, saying, hey, come check out the survey that we're doing. But where do we come in for a high-density house? Where do we come in?
So I I can try it.
It's apartment. Where do we come?
So there, there's a zoning ordinance that's in place today, which is legislated legislatively enacted, you know, some time ago. Um, that provides for this type of development by conditional use, which is why we're all here this evening. The conditional use has an advertising requirement, which includes publication in the newspaper. Uh, for two weeks, two successive weeks prior to this hearing. And then there's a mailed notice in the township's zoning ordinance, which is in addition to state law, so it goes goes above and beyond what's otherwise required. Uh, for properties within a perimeter of five hundred feet around this property, see notice by mail. So those are the advertising requirements for this particular hearing.
And then beyond that, there's the land development process, which these folks are gonna. You know, at some point, get this property in front of the planning commission, that, those meetings are held monthly. And the public is certainly welcome to come, listen to their presentations, the development of their plans and offer comments.
Yeah, I see the courier news you posted there. I bought it enough two years ago, so I'm, I'm, I'm here in the township.
You can go, there's a one that's called. Eye on Development, will tell you all of the developments that are currently in place. Where they are in the process within the township and if they're planning commission, if they're here for the decision to use. And so forth, or if they're running construction, if they've already been. So all of that is there and it's, and it's available. We also do, um. At least twice a month, email blast, you enter one, it's like, it's up on our email list. And we'll send out, uh, emails prior to the meetings with links to agendas and so forth.
Hey, can I give you one, just take you back one step further than our zoning, just to give you a welcome to the community? Thanks for coming. Yeah. We are the state, under the municipality's planning code, requires all planning jurisdictions, and I'll define that in a minute. Who allow for all uses. Uses being different types of housing, different types of commercial uses, quarries. You know, shopping centers, you name it, various uses, everybody has an obligation to provide a service. We uniquely in the state, uh, were one of a few, have a regional planning unit rather than just by the municipality. We join together with all of the municipalities within the Sauter area school district to form the Indian Valley Planning Commission. And we have a regional comprehensive plan. Within that regional comprehensive plan, we are able to better disseminate those uses. To the appropriate places. Oh, please, you bring her up. We want to hear what she has to say. Sweet, and what we've done, and as you know, this school district has, goes from. Almost next to the Landville interchange to the Turnpike, to some very rural areas out into Upper Salford and Salford Township, et cetera. The reason Upper Salford, Salford, many parts of Franconia, and most of the western part of Lower Salford. Has been able to stay as rural and open as it has been, is because we have focused the development in the villages. And we've focused the development to Sauter and Telford boroughs, where there is historically public sewer, public water. Transportation networks that can handle the traffic and not push it into what had been the pattern before that of general suburbanization. Of large swastika lands. So while I can appreciate your comment about high-density housing, et cetera. When you look at where it's going within the corridor compared to stretching it further out. This is one of the areas that was identified in the regional comprehensive plan, and even the Indian Valley, the the planning commission commented on that. This meets the future land use requirements that we have within that plan, and that's what's allowed us to, once you get off our main corridors. Have the greenways and the open space and the other things that we enjoy throughout this area. So I just want to give you a little perspective of. You know, this is one development within a focus of us right now, but how it fits into what is our broader planning mandate for the community as well. But that is the end of our village commercial, that is a village area, and then it stops. It doesn't keep going. There are these pockets that have that requirement. And it'd be very, I I think you'd find it fascinating if you pulled down our zoning map and start looking at how limited it can be compared to where the more wide-open spaces are.
Think a lot of people. Use as to how you had said they're zoning for commercial, they're zoning for rural, not everyone understands that.
Right.
So it's educating the public. I don't know how you achieve the public, there's a lot of us out there, um, and so. Just to let us know, someone actually wrote paragraph out of paragraph, trying to explain exactly what you guys are explaining to me right now. Um, cause they're like, oh, I have a say, I wanna say, I'm like, but you, you don't. Yeah. Something, but you, you can't when you, you zone for that, right? It's something you're trying to do, that's where we're having a disconnect. Yeah.
And that's not fair, okay? It's also the reason why we have, and I can get into a whole discussion of a housing affordability and the housing crisis in the country. Because of NIMBYism and nobody wanting new development to occur, there's not enough housing, okay? And I'm an advocate for that and I'm open and full throttle about that. It's not from this position, it's from another position I have. But we have appropriate zoning and we're not rezoning other areas outside of this. This is what it's zoned for. They've made a presentation on it and we're just assuring clients of that in this case. We don't have the ability to say yes or no. We have the ability to say you're in compliance or you're not in compliance, and if you're not in compliance, you have to come back when you are.
That makes sense, yes, thank you.
Miss Pankoff, I can add one more thing to the communications committee. It's interesting you say educating the public. That's something that we are actively discussing. We have found sample videos, but there are other townships, so we don't want to share that, but we're in the process of seeing if we can explore ways to create our own. Um, another thing I wanted to have to add to, another way you can stay involved, we now have text message capabilities to alert you of our different meetings. Um, I caution you to take the social media with what it is, you know, but we have a great staff that you can always call, get information. As well, and the follow-up was supervisor Canada said.
As well, and the follow up with supervisor cannabis said. These processes, we can add conditions, you know, but it's hearing from the public that is huge, you know, we don't have to rezone or add tax amendments and stuff like that. And hearing from the public is a great way to know where.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Been to a lot of the planning commission meetings, I've been to a lot of them. The board meetings, I researched the Indian Valley Comprehensive Plan. Um, quarry road was listed on that as one of the most scenic scenic areas. In this whole township, um. Whether it's in the village or it's not in the village, it's. Now going to go to. Low identity, whatever you want to call it. We must have had thirty thirty-three developments since we moved here about thirty years ago. Um, yes, all zone for that, it's not zone that. Since that we rezoned everything is like a blanket type. Our for zoning kind of thing in the past. Um, just disappointed, I would like to see even just some of the. Outscores of the villages that aren't way out in the rural areas, because I don't want to have to go all the way out into the. You know, the the major outskirts of the outside of villages, just to be able to find reading. Um, I know you guys can't fight it. But yet I've seen other townships and and things fight and some of them win. It's just very disconcerting because I I know you guys really want to preserve. We're supposed to be a historical preservation type of, I mean, you look on the township's website. And that's all you see, or the historical type of emblems and housings and barns, like that. Go towards town. It's 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 terrible, and I've talked to many people when they've said the same thing, it's not, you know, just. So I know it's not going to make a big difference, we can come to the committees, we can voice our opinions. Uh, but the only thing that I've been told is you could just modify, change, can't remove it, it's just modifications. Of whatever plans are going to still go through. And it it's just a shame, it really is, um, I thought Walmart and McDonald's, so that's how far back we're going. And, um. It's a shame, it really is, because there's a lot of green around our areas that don't need to be eaten up, really. So, and. This is just really unnecessary, so I just want to.
Carl, do you have any anything further this evening?
The exhibits that I presented, eight, one through eight, six.
Okay, um, I will, uh, accept the applicant exhibits, I'll accept the township's exhibits into the record. I know we've already had some, in in your finished, Carl? Okay, I know we've already had some comment, uh, but now is technically the, does anybody have a a statement that they want to make for or against this application at this time?
I'm sorry, your name? For the other meeting, they did ask about that land being. Not built on us. Shelley mentioned, is that going to be a more long?
The, you're talking about the area between the the stream channel and uh, Main Street, correct? This land is basically being, per our ordinance, they're using up all the allowable density, if you will, on the property between a pervious building covered, et cetera. So no, there's not more that can be done with the property, and that's, I think what we've looked at is that the area to the. Towards Main Street cannot be redeveloped other than as non-residential, so we don't get more apartments in that area, and then. The site is basically eaten up by what they've developed.
I don't know if this is in the layer use type of meetings that we're going to. Shift or has something to do with the conditional use. Are these apartments, as far as I know, they're going to be for rent, they're not going to be, they're not townhomes to. Like make an investment in and and purchases are just a rental type of things.
They presented to us as a rental unity. They're an I four sale unit.
I would like to oppose that if I can put it on record, because we're not going to have. Um, a very outstanding, long-term. Uh, well-hat. Um, people that have. You know, that that want to be responsible for their. Structure, you know, you're going to have a lot of people that are moving in and moving out, you're going to have a lot of people that don't care about the property. Um, in the beginning, it'll all be looking really pretty, but uh, just rent is bad street for me. You know, it's, you know, you don't have anybody that upkeeps it, I I don't know why that would be right near an east street. I don't know why anything is is more of a rental. In a in a village that we have, um. I don't get the the point of it. The places that I saw that had been built around here are mostly purchasing, townhomes or. Condos or something like that, so. I just have a concern for that, I have a feeling it's it's.
I just, if I could just note one item, they are not going to be individually owned. By investors, it is one complex owned by one property owner who is. Doing one operation and maintenance of the property through property maintenance, et cetera. So it's their job to keep the operation and maintenance and upkeep, they're not relying on the individual tenants to do such. Which is different than potentially in your development where some people may have rented their twin or rented their town. And that becomes a little bit of a different scenario because you have maybe an absentee landlord versus someone who's maintaining them. None, and it's in single ownership of both the rental. Residential and the commercial site, so it acts as a unified property. Just, I I and I understand your concern of owner occupant voice is not, but at least from the property maintenance standpoint. There's a lot more levers to keep it maintained the way it's supposed to be in this ownership regiment. We have a property maintenance code and Mr. Buie in our code enforcement office does. Yeah.
Two, is there any HOA or patent plans, I'm sure there's a plan to keep things transparent and some. Do you know the price that you're going to have for these yet, a rental price?
All right, anybody who hasn't had a chance to make a comment or speak tonight? Make a comment. Okay, at this point, we'll close the hearing and as the board knows, um, you can vote this evening or take it under advisement, so. Up to the board.
We doing a disservice to the applicant if we do put, say, you put a note for Chase Bank, what happens when Chase Bank says no, we don't want to do that? Do they have to redo it again, what happens if we keep the note as opposed to just kind of?
We tweet him and his God.
Well, what would our, what would our notes say? Right, it'd be a condition of approval, they'd have to meet the.
And we have the ability to condition this on certain areas, and one of them is it's a specific reference within the ordinance that the. Architecture needs to meet a residential scale and. We're suggesting that what they've presented mostly meets a residential scale with that condition on it, we're asking to go one step further, which is to. Right, clean up that final part, it's a perfectly permissible condition as far as I would be able to see.
And if if they, if they didn't like it, they have the opportunity to appeal that condition if you were to approve it with a condition. Yeah. You you can put reasonable conditions on a condition piece.
But I believe they have met the burden of the conditional use for the purpose of what we're doing here, which is very limited, quite frankly, to architecture. The drive-through and some very limited items with regards to, so. I would make a motion to approve the conditional use subject to the conditions on the architecture, the sidewalk that we had here. The limitations on uh, use of the property to the north of the. Storm Channel towards Main Street as only non-residential in the future. The provision of access of pedestrians throughout the whole site via a pedestrian easement that was uh, suggested earlier. And the representations that were made with regards to the consistency of building materials throughout the site and the building materials as discussed. Being both vinyl and clap or hardy plank like on the Chase Bank vinyl on the other buildings and then stone as represented.
I think that was in the form of a deed restriction or similar type agreement, almost like what's what happens in the M U district.
Correct.
All right.
I I would, I mean, if we get a second, they can have discussion.
So we have a motion on the table, I'm sorry, moved in second in.
You're on now.
You're on. Both those, both those you can, will be handled in play development for you.
Correct, as we do in. This will not be different than what we've seen in our other developments.
Moved in second and all in favor, say aye. All right, that takes care of the unfinished business for the evening, we have no new business. We do have a second discussion period on the agenda, if there is anyone in the audience who wishes to be ready.
Andy Green, Andy Green. This sort of related to the one ninety-six. More question and comment for council and board.
Sure.
Ever since uh, mainland point and the new Wawa running up the street that are across the street there. Um, there's been a significant increase in traffic on quarry road. And with this new proposal development here, that's going to be a spurt, especially if you have the detail in the back that you're high turnover customer. And so where it used to be before Wawa, this used to be very rare to see anybody walk or walking. At least between Fairway Drive. Now, on a daily basis, if the weather's nice and sometimes either at night. Let's see, people walking, biking, um, kids doing scooters, skateboards up and down the street. And our road is just not safe for that, and so I agree. Um, I know that the board is considered before a sidewalk or bike path or something down through Orange Road. And. Remember this additional belt has increased the uh, elevation to.
We have two gentlemen sitting on either side of me that are on our trails committee.
Definitely a part of what we've been talking, so we we what we've been doing is evaluating the the township for missing trail connection. Missing sidewalk pieces, uh, that definitely falls into that category. So we actively pursue getting grants to construct those various facilities.
Unfortunately, we're just a trade, your neighborhood was built before we were. We tried to keep it rural, so that curb but no sidewalk throughout one of our larger. You know, suburban subdivisions, um, which is unfortunate, and that's a sin of the past, if you want to say that. But there would be a really, because of the number of kids and people who live in your neighborhood, at least those streets are wide enough, you can say to the side. But to get something from your intersection out would be a wonderful accomplishment as a start and then continuing our way down, so. Cause I see you all the time on the uh, road and I don't know how.
Much different walk on Fairway Drive than it is on quarry road, there is no doubt.
Oh, we understand that.
So that's the level of effort Kevin and I sit on the committee, that that that's definitely our thrust, and I know Andy, you actually built that naturalized trail. Truly grateful for, so yes, we get, we get.
Also, is there a timeline? Uh, timeline or is it is it held by like you said, trying to get.
It's more a matter of, you know, pursuing the grant funding that's available, where there is uh, an overall map of targeted areas. Uh, that, you know, to the set that we can put together a project that fits a certain grant size. Uh, because the grants, grants come in all shapes and sizes, right, eighty thousand dollars to a million dollars, so in anywhere in between. So it really is a matter of matching up what fits best, but this is, you know, with the development, it's. Becomes higher on our, we have a priority list, we have, you know, thirty to fifty projects that we're looking at around the township, so. But it's it's on the list.
But in theory, we're now at the point where that would be a. A relatively short sidewalk extension or bike trail, or whatever you want to call it, path, just to get the fairway, which would then incorporate both sides of. Their sidewalk on the other side of fairway, to at least get to that point would be a fairly short one that they could look at, and I, I think that's something we might value. But, that it.
I think we made concessions or that we have developers. Then I've been told that developers may make a concession or an offer to maybe, uh. Yeah, or work with the community, like increasing, let's imagine some trails. Uh, or doing something for the community one way or another, I'm wondering, um, if we're insistent on. Keeping the developing going, uh, maybe instead of certain trails, we can actually have them. Put into a funding to maybe. Have a safety type of uh. Fund, but for sidewalks or things like that, because. These could be very dangerous.
We do collect impact fees for both traffic impact, and then we also have a fund for our recreation impact fee. There are funds that are per unit derived as part of these developments. And then, and then there's also opportunity where if there's connections that can be made, if you can, we can get them to make those connections, we work with them to see if. That's a possibility, if it's a slight off-site improvement or something, we are not legally allowed to force them to do all-site improvements, though. Although if there's a, an exchange made where maybe they don't want to put sidewalk here because it's better over there, that can be done because it's an even exchange.
Or it's a township.
They not only reviews and they do have grant funds, we have to seek them, they don't, they don't really do work.
Anyone else? This mast.
Nothing to do with one ninety-six Main Street. Letter Rock and the vulnerability study, just that there is somebody to make positive comments for making Letter Rock vulnerable. Um, I've been in Letter Rock for most of the fifty-eight years, for a lot of. Any of the suburban type development that's here today. Uh, we used to ride our bikes as kids down one thirteen, would not want to do that today. Uh, and I lived right outside of Letter Rock as well, and I cannot get from my house to my office, which is point nine miles. Saying, either on a bike or on foot, I do it, but I always have to be prepared to die. The ditch and into somebody's property at any time. Uh, it would be a great asset to the community to be able to walk. But rock, but also connect Letter Rock to other parts of the township, I think that's one thing I'm very proud of, with lower Southford. Uh, we've done, historically done a great job, trails, industry and networks, doesn't reach out to that part of it. So I think that's important. Endeavor.
Appreciate that. What else?
I just, uh, I know we went from the motion, though not much of a discussion, there was a lobby and a stenographer, but I just want the record to say why I voted. Again, those renditions were labeled less than a week ago, we tried to give them two weeks for the advertisement, but five, three A B C, four A B. None of that was advertised, and I feel like we could have waited instead of rushing it. And I also just want to thank all the people who came out here, often we hear from developers, we don't always have an opportunity to hear from residents. And it's hugely important to hear your opinions as well, so thank you for that.
Any other discussion? Is there need this evening for executive session, Mr. Ducas? There is that, and so with that, I would request a motion to adjourn and move to Jordan. So move so order, thank you all.